Got that row of people. So, and then it would get everybody's voice.
Well, I think we ran the camera out that maybe we'll get this work. There we go.
We have audio.
Okay, all set?
All set.
Okay. We will call to order the city council work session for Monday, February 24th, 2025. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All down.
Mark Snyder.
Here.
Doug Brand.
Here.
Ken Derby.
Here.
Darrell Blair.
Here.
Bonnie Shinonis.
Here.
Fosak Messer.
Here.
Adam Woski.
Here.
Tim Petrie and Phil Leclerc are absent.
Okay, thanks for that. Uh, option number four, discussion items. Uh, we're gonna skip up to F. It's an update on City Hall Elevator Project, because that's why we are in this building today.
The whole reason we're here tonight, uh, the work did commence today on the City Hall Elevator Project. I'm told the contractor has confirmed they have all of the necessary pieces, including the very large control unit with all the electronics, the power feed, the hydraulic pumps in place. Uh, we, there is some, an issue that they ran into, heard an electrician will have to be coming in tomorrow to, to do one modification, but, uh, we'll keep you updated if things are moving forward. And throughout the lobby level of the building, we have it posted as shown here. The building is post for the elevator upgrade. And anyone who needs the assist assistance or service from any office on the upper floors of the building can call the designated numbers there if they've got their phone with them, or can likewise stop the customer service counter and, uh, make sure that someone's directed down to you. But doing the best we can to continue to provide service for all members of the community. And, uh, but that said, there's a high likelihood that, at least the, the two regular march meetings of this body, possibly the work session a month from tonight, will, uh, continue to be at this location of the library. We'll keep you updated. Other meetings are moving here to the library, like the IDC and CBA tomorrow night for the small size groups like, uh, council committees, personnel and finance, utilities, public works. Uh, we'll probably try to do those just in the lobby level, level at City Hall. We've got a conference table and chairs to pull out right there. Just watch those agendas and meeting notes closely.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Uh, back up to A, review of possible amendments to city ordinance pertaining to short, short term rentals and related matter, and follow-up to discussions at January council work session.
Yes, you had in your packets a draft ordinance amendment, which, uh, is a staff's best effort to be responsive to what we heard as consensus items out of the January work session. Uh, this right now is presented as one sort of omnibus ordinance. You may want to break it out into individual parts, particularly when we get down to section nine, the very, uh, last section, or section eight, I beg your pardon. That pertains to an amendment to the zoning code that does require, uh, the advisory input first of the plan commission, and then a public hearing, so, uh, that one can perhaps take a separate track. Uh, and council could either act on the non-zoning code aspects of the amendment first, or simply hold those in abeyance if the direction is to refer that zoning code amendment, uh, to the plan commission. I'm gonna let, uh, Andrew Adams, our attorney, who's joining us via speakerphone, take the lead on each of these items, but, uh, the thought tonight was to address section by section the proposed ordinance amendment, get further feedback from the council. Again, you know this, likewise for anyone listening out there and hopefully hearing us at this point. Uh, this is for the council's additional input. This is not an action item tonight. Andrew, with that, if you want to, uh, address first, uh, section one.
Yeah, so the first part, uh, pretty straightforward, just a definition, uh, that we were, we were talking about. Part of the issue, um, that we noted was the, the definition and use of the term, um, family when trying to define a capacity for short-term rentals. Uh, so we just, we added the term maximum capacity, gave it this definition here, where it's, uh, two individuals for every bedroom plus four. Uh, so if it's, so for example, uh, say a three-bedroom house then could have a, a capacity of, uh, up to 10. Uh, what would be the idea? And, and as you can see in the definition here, it's limited to, um, residential dwelling units offered for rent as a short-term rental. Uh, so that's a very limited definition right now, just solve that little question mark that we had. Straightforward, questions from anybody?
I don't have questions, but we did have one person comment about, that seems like a lot. If, if you allow, like, say 10 people for a four-bedroom, or, I mean, well, I want. Okay.
Sorry about the.
If, let's say we didn't allow it, and we just said two, two people per bedroom, and there were three bedrooms, which would mean six, is that gonna affect an ordinary single-family resident who might have five or six children? And they have, you understand my question?
The, the limit, as intended, would apply solely to short-term rentals.
Yeah, so if you, if you read the definition right there, uh, i- in the, in the second line, uh, it, it says maximum capacity of a residential dwelling unit offered for rent as a short-term rental. So it's limited to those residential dwelling units offered for rent as a short-term rental.
Okay.
We, you know, we have heard some feedback from folks suggesting that's too high. You know, so much depends on the house. There are a lot of arrangements, some of us may have grown up in houses like that, where there's a bedroom with a couple sets of bunk beds in it, and that, and that works. Or there's a sleeper sofa in the living room, or the little kid in a pack-and-play. That doesn't mean two per bedroom plus four is magic. I think we started the discussion at the last meeting, from the staff suggestion of perhaps two per bedroom plus two. Uh, it's, I've also noted from social media discussion of this matter, among other things, that, uh, some communities do exempt children under the age of one, or, yeah, pick a number, under the age of two. They might go in a pack, that's what they called them in the old days, anyway, pack-and-play, or, or a crib, as opposed to taking up a lot of space.
Well, and this is an absolute, absolute maximum. Um, the individual STR owner is gonna set a limit that's conducive to their property.
They could, they could go lower.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, they just.
Yeah, there's a lot that are lower. You know, they need to protect their property as best they can fit to by the number.
I don't know, if ours consensus, are folks comfortable with two times bedrooms plus four?
I like that, I also like the idea of, um, a two-year-old, if, if your child was two or younger, they don't count as a person taking up space. You know, I think that that's kind of fair, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Some have suggested that in, who love the plus two or plus.
I think it should be in addition to, you've got your, you know, three bedroom, you got 10 people, but somebody's got a baby. Are you really gonna count that kid as taking up an adult-sized space and using? The whole thing is how, how they're gonna be using the, the residents, because what their landlords are basing it on is number of people, which will help them figure out how much it's gonna cost them in utilities. And there's other, you know, other factors. So, and a baby, I don't think qualifies as a, they're people, but they're not altogether people yet.
So do you have a particular, uh, age that you would want to set that at, so that we can add it?
I think two, two years old is, is fair. It depends on everybody else, if they, if they, first of all, if they wanna do it, if they wanna do it, you wanna go one year or two years, I, you know, up to you guys.
I think two is fair.
I think two is fair as well.
Yeah. They say you're not completely mobile, you, you know.
Right.
Or we're gonna say up to two-year-old, or two, they, they went under, yeah.
So we're all good with the two years then, right?
Consensus. And everyone seemed to be shaking their head pretty much. So the consensus would be, sorry, go ahead, enter.
I was just gonna say, so I'll, I'll add that in so that you can see that in, in the next round here.
Thank you.
So I hear consensus is two per bedroom plus up to four adults, and any children under the age of two do not count toward the state as well.
And four is under two?
Yeah. Again, on any of these, those are the rules you expect property owners are gonna, and renters are gonna play by the rules. And in, when it comes to enforcement, it's enforceable, but again, we don't have resources that are gonna be out there knocking on doors in the middle of the night. But if people are acting in good faith, use the, the rule. Section two.
Okay, yeah, uh, so the next one is a bit of a addition, uh, something that's not really addressed anywhere in the ordinances, so we've added this outdoor lighting restriction. Uh, requires shielding, uh, and requires lighting, lighting to stay on, uh, the, the property of the short-term rental. Requires lighting, shutting down, shielding, uh, specific, like, no higher than 45 degrees, which, you know, uh, come in an angle, but, uh, but can't be, can't be pointed directly off the property. Uh, and then set also a, uh, time limitation, uh, with no, uh, none of that outdoor lighting between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. This was the attempt to address that sort of, uh, lighting thing that we talked about, uh, that we're kind of cutting from whole cloth here, that doesn't, isn't really addressed elsewhere in the set, i- in the ordinances.
Right, thanks. And help me out, Andrew, four, at least in some measure, was meant to address decorative outdoor lighting, like, uh, catenary lighting, sort of like the lighting that's around the skating rink downtown, patio lighting, that sort of thing, which, if it's the bare bulb, decorative bulbs, it's hard not to see the, um, filament or the, what's the term that was used, or the light source directly from other property.
Right, yeah.
So the thought was to impose some limits there. And again, this is proposed, just as a reminder, specifically to apply to licensed short-term rental properties. And it would apply, the question had come up, we have some of those where there's, the owners are sometimes the folks staying there. If it's licensed as a short-term rental, the way this is written, it would apply, whether it's in the mode of being rented out, or whether it's in, or whether it's in the mode of the owner being there. I think prop, if this gets adopted, probably for simplicity of enforcement, that would help. Otherwise, you know, if it was called the police are knocking on the door, oh, it's the owner. Well, no, as it's written.
Along the same lines of, uh, I would just consider, uh, for example, um, truck drivers with, uh, you know, with a, a commercial driver's license, um, i- if they get dinged for anything while driving their normal vehicles, it'll affect their commercial truck driving license in the same way. Uh, you know, if, if somebody wants to hold out their home to rent, um, they have to, uh, abide by a certain standard here. Um, and, I, I, I mean, I don't think that this imposes anything particularly strenuous on, um, that person trying to rent out their property, but, uh, but if they want that privilege, uh, then, then they have to play by certain rules.
Mark, go ahead.
I have a question. I, I missed the work session, I was on the telephone. My question is, uh, these seem like they're reasonable requirements for everybody. Why are we just restricting it to short-term? Why don't we make it part of our lighting ordinance, which would apply homeowners too? Because of all these points, you don't want to aggressively impacting neighbors too, and it's favorable for the community, and I think this is just a general requirement for lighting ordinances. We don't have a lot of ordinances, instructions right now regarding lighting.
I brought a lot of this up, and I think the, the reason or the thought behind it was, some of these homes aren't being occupied, so they don't even know the nuisance that they may be causing to their neighbors. And the neighbor has no one to really go, can't really go knock on someone's door when they're not there, uh, to even tell them that there's a problem or something going on, where i- if you're a neighbor, if Mark and I live next to each other, and that this was an issue, I could go talk to Mark, or Mark may not have his lights on all the time because he's there and will turn them off. Like, I think most neighbors do. And I think this was one thing that I wanted to bring up, because again, short-term rental owners aren't usually there. So their lights just stay on and they're on 24/7.
Well, if your point is valid, it is a nuisance. And if I happen to go to Florida for two months or so and neighbors have been causing my, your neighbors are impacted, impacted by my absence, so why would make it a general rule for lighting ordinance in our community? If nothing is, uh, oppressive, it's just as beneficial for the neighbors on either side.
Yes, no. But if you make it a rule for everybody, then all the houses that may just likely fall in, that aren't up to this rule, you'd make everybody breaking the law right off the bat. This would be something we could ease into. We put a suggestion in our flyers or something with utility laws, but if just mandated on everybody at once, it'd be, it'd be not right.
There's probably a good number of people that have lights that do still over the property line.
Because they have actual lights that are, that have no, I forget what it's called. But the light is recessed up inside, so that you don't have that. If, they're hard to come by, they're not real hard to come by, but most of the lights that people buy for their house aren't that.
Um, one thing that kind of bothers me is that in section three, number four, which we're talking about now, any light, any lighting fixture installed on a residential property is what this applies to. And then you go down to the bottom, um, cannot be visible between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. I think that there should be an exception for, I, I, what I would call necessary or common sense lighting. You know, because if, you don't want it to, you know, be pitch black back there. These people might be sitting around a fire, and somebody wants to go and make it look old-fashioned, you better have some lights on, number one, now that I think about it. But, um, they have to see where they're going, and they have to see as they come back. So I think, I think it should apply to the, what did you call it? The venturian can, canter lever?
Yeah, contemporary.
Thank you.
I learned that when we did.
I can't remember. Like, you know, anything that's, uh, above and beyond a normal bulb.
I mean, a porch light, a garage light, stuff like that, I think it's fine. I mean, I don't think you want total, or motion lights. That have maybe sometimes the time, they just can't stay on motion forever. Um, but, yeah, I mean, I, I think a little light is fine, I think. You get, you get a couple of bad apples, that probably ruined it for a lot of people, and that's why we're talking about the first one.
Right.
Well, and I, I would point out that, uh, the, the part of this, uh, and, uh, i- it was saying, um, that during that time, if the, the light source can't be directly visible, so the hooded, hooded lights are fine. Uh, a light with, a lamp with a, with a cover, um, something pointing down that's not shining out i- i- to the others, uh, other properties, uh, those are, those are fine. Uh, this would be, you know, those, you know, the party lights that you put up around the, the scaffolding that have bare bulbs, that kind of thing.
Would, would it be more direct? And I know some of you have been invited to view situations like this. Are we talking primarily, I don't know how to describe them, bare bulb fixtures?
Yeah. Hey, what's it get for 20 bucks on their own sale at the end of the season of Menards, right? And string the wrench.
I don't think you buy any light of Menards that actually would need a.
Do they?
I'm just thinking around my house, like.
What, their, their garage light, garage light, the front door light, so I mean, they're not on all the time, but.
I have, I have string lights. I don't keep my house.
I have a hate mind if I made it, that would have been so hot.
Yeah, you can do that, you can paint the outer edges of those bulbs.
I'm on it, 10:00 AM when I leave, or before, but 8:00 AM drop my kids off, so they're still on.
Yeah.
So, pretty strict definition, I guess. Especially with the LED lights, like, I've seen your lights there, they just kind of cast a nice, um, starburst almost, right? So I mean, technically you can see the light source, but it's diffused. So I mean, would that be, you know?
Are we talking light that has a cover?
Is it a cover?
Any kind of a cover, yeah.
Yeah, like my, my, um, motion sensor lights have their LED, and they have like a milky, um, lens over them. Okay, so, I mean, they're still somewhat bright, but I've got them pointing down, but I mean, so you can technically see where the light's coming from from across the street. But I, I don't know if we need a little different wording on that one, or?
Well, the number one says, "All outdoor lighting fixtures shall be fully shielded and lighted. From such fixture, fixtures shall not exceed property boundaries of the short-term rental." So to me, that would be. The light itself? You know, like if this.
And how do we, how do we judge that, if it casts a shadow?
I've, I've been written up for that.
Okay.
On the side. Lights on the side of my house, because they were like 15 feet high, and I have a parking area next to my house, if the light shined across the property line, I was, so if I turned my light back on, then I wouldn't be figured. That your light's not supposed to shine off your property line or across the sidewalk. At least that's what the police officer told me, why, I didn't ask to see it, I just shut the light off.
Easier.
Yeah.
Sometimes it is, sometimes they have to dig in and make sure that you're being told the right thing, but I went.
And that was like your private residence?
Yeah.
We did have some discussion with the city attorney about, uh, you know, do you want to get into lighting levels or lumens? And the thought was to, you know, we already worry about decibel meters, and, you know, who are we gonna equip with lumen meters to be, uh, police?
Yeah, at least for me, my biggest concern is, is it shining in someone else's windows? Whether there's curtains or not, I think that that's where you get disruptive. How to define that, if you define it just as that, then you gotta invite the police in the house, I, I'm not sure, I don't know.
And that's where all of this started, because it was decorative.
Right, shining into people's houses.
So, yeah.
It was a little bit of a nuisance, as you, as we could see from at least the pictures, that's what I, what I saw.
I think it should apply to that. Any oddball, weird, out-of-the-norm lighting that's gonna interfere with your next-door neighbor, that can't, that, that's gotta shut down by 11:00. But normal lights, let them have normal light. I mean, I can just imagine going out into my backyard and, and having motion sensors. I, I, I would not be happy with that, I would like to have some, some light on so I can see the person I'm talking to, or, you know. But nothing outrageous, but what this was, it was really bright party lights. So.
How, how would you propose that we make that limit? Are we, we're, are we gonna try, would you like us to try to kind of define, um, what type of lighting? Or, or are you thinking, do you, do you wanna try to start using lumen meters, or?
No, I don't.
How about if we use the word continuing? In other words, you can't have these type of lights that shine continuously between 11:00 and 6:00. That allows security lights that come on, your, uh, motion detector lights. You don't want something constantly, like, party lights running all the time, being 11:00 o'clock till 6:00 in the morning. The terms videos might look the other research that we have, that might be.
Or you might want to generally exempt motion detector type security lights. And I know I've seen some discussions online, how, how frequently do those cycle, I don't know. Depending on the type you have, that can be an adjustable.
They're usually adjustable, like, two minutes, four minutes, five minutes.
Yeah.
Sometimes five or constantly, it'll be out.
Yeah.
Something in front of.
Sometimes you can get out of bed and get the broom and go on the sweep.
Oh, yeah.
You have some, Chen?
Um, I have a question about number two, the last sentence. All like, all outdoor lighting should be, should shine down. What about for flags or decorative lighting that comes up, that recessed lighting in lawns? Um, those kind of things. Um, I know people that, like, there's rules for the American flag, it has to be lit at night, so that light would be shining upward instead of down, correct?
Yep.
So.
Yeah, some people put in lighting that washes, if you've got a really pretty masonry house, they like to wash the face of it with light.
Yeah, like I have.
Generally, I think if you're washing your own house, it should be, probably, you're not really crossing any kind of line. I directed, shouldn't be directed away.
Yeah, that's what I kind of like, shouldn't be directed away, it should be directed.
I think about most of the little solar lights people put in on their walkways, and those direct down, yeah.
Yeah. I have some that shine up, but they shine down my house.
I have one in my, shines in my tree in the backyard, but it shines straight up.
It seems the, the cabinetry lighting, or sometimes just the really bright LED robe type lighting, why does the Kenny Rogers Roasters episode of Seinfeld, those would be, you know, that one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just define it as, um, extraordinary, I mean, in an extraordinary sense. Maybe just decorative lighting, or lighting that shines in other people's windows. It's easy to see if it shines in someone else's window or not. Do a little in public.
No, that might kind of make sense.
I, I want to be reasonable, both sides, people that are being affected and people that want to also have light, because I like to have light on too. Sometimes you're in your backyard, or sometimes it's Christmas time, and you don't always shut them off in time. I mean, are you really gonna be there at 11:01 and knocking on someone's door? Or maybe they work second shift and then they get home to midnight. Are you really gonna knock on their door and say, hey, why the hell haven't you got your Christmas lights up? I don't think that's reasonable. But they're also not gonna shine in somebody's window. Right, I think that's where the problem is, is shining in someone else's window.
Yeah, some people like that extra light in their backyard for security reasons.
No matter what the, I know some people say it's not bad, but it's a sense of security.
Yeah.
To me, it's security, I like it, helps with the cameras too. Yep, see better in, in the camera if there's someone there.
Even though lighting directed downward or onto your property, a lot of it's gonna, if it's a, if it's a snow cover at night, if, if, or, or if you've got dark pavers and it's summer, it's gonna be a lot, a big difference in reflectivity. I'm not helping the solution, I'm just saying.
But that's something that they're gonna have to look at when they put the lights in. I mean, right now, we're starting with SDRs, not with all residents, and let's see, I say, let's see where the heck it goes. Again, I think most reasonable neighbors can be reasonable with each other. The SDR becomes the fact that they're not always a neighbor, that they're not necessarily there. Chances are, that one house that we saw at least, probably wouldn't be able to sleep with their own lights on, so if they were there, they'd probably shut off. But they're not there, therefore they're on. The neighbor can't sleep, there's no way in heck these people can sleep in their own house, because it'd be shining just bright.
Consensus?
The term I was looking for before was full cutoff lighting.
Okay.
I think we should really take a deeper look at this because now things are popping up that we hadn't thought about before. And one of the, one of them is like the flag. You know, we had, that wasn't even on our radar. And I'm sure there's going to be other things. So, I think maybe we really should put some time into investigating other things that light is good for. You know, that we, we need to address.
So, is the consensus to bring this back with more specifics, especially concerned about, call it decorative outdoor lighting? But with the understanding that this ordinance, at least as a first step, would it apply still only to SDRs?
Right.
I guess. We can, I think the attorney should maybe take a strong look at making sure that it doesn't go into other people's windows. And maybe we'll come back with something.
Some kind of wording.
Pretty easy there. And we can, they can do it again when we get it and say, hey, yeah, well, we still find problems with that. Or, but at least it's a easy step.
Something that seems to be common here is that the, the problem is not necessarily the lighting. The problem is, you know, the nuisance that the lighting causes. So, I'm wondering if maybe, you know, because you've already got trespassing in the nuisance ordinance, we just shifted a little bit to, to include light as part of that trespassing. Because light can, I mean, that can be a trespass against your neighbor. So, in that, in that way, it's part of the nuisance. So, trying to, trying to write a, an ordinance that includes every type of lighting is going to be practically impossible. So, shifting it to something more like protecting against lighting that is a nuisance to neighbors, I think is going to be more practical in terms of writing an ordinance that could actually be enforced. So, what, what do you think of me starting there with the, with the next draft of this? Even a nuisance ordinance instead of, or maybe, you know, including it as part of this, but, but using kind of the nuisance language instead of necessarily trying to list out types of lighting?
Are you going to kind of define what that nuisance is? Because I guess a nuisance to me versus a nuisance to someone else. Someone else might step outside their house at 11:00 and say, I can see your lights. And that's probably going to be a nuisance. But is it really a nuisance?
We'll, we'll try to, we'll try to couch it more in the nuisance language and the, the worry more about the trespass side of it than necessarily like all lighting must face down and be shielded and all that kind of thing. But focus more on the, the effect that it has on the neighbors.
Okay.
Go ahead and bring that back to us after you changed it. We can run with it from there, I guess. But Adam makes a totally valid point. I was going to say too, that my nuisance is, might not be your nuisance. You know, it might be really picky and I just, it's a free for all for me. You know what I mean? So.
Again, plenty of resources online. I feel questioned how you enforce some of them. I was looking at broker deal, for example, pretty quality community. Lighting on residential property shall be designed to illuminate specific areas, driveways, entryways, decks, residents, facades, landscaping, highlights, et cetera. Lighting shall not be used to illuminate entire properties. Well, that's good. So, you know, flood. Sorry. Residential lighting shall be aimed so as to eliminate glare into neighboring properties. I'm not sure how you, that sounds good. I'm not sure how you define it. Layer.
There'll be, yeah, reflections of, yeah. There are, there are lots of ways we can go. So, I, I think probably makes sense to just scrap this and try again.
Okay.
So, section four then. This one, it, it's mostly kind of the, the same thing that was already there. So, the whole first, like two thirds of it were already there until we get to the last sentence. So, this is just limiting who can reapply. So, that if a licensee has been suspended, revoked or non-renewed, they cannot apply for a new license until the next year has passed. Simple little addition so that if they get, you know, if they have their license revoked in October, they can't just turn around and apply again in January. Any questions on that?
The standard for a revocation in the event of illegal activity on the license premises, again, is to, and again, this is when the council may suspend, revoke or not renew a license. It's still, assumes there's some ability to use discretion. But it is based on two or more, I'm sorry, two or more convictions. And that might be a long wait. On the other hand, it eliminates the uncertainty of basing it on simply citations. What do you do if the judge throws the citation out?
Where you have a citation, then the end is unwarranted.
Yeah.
You know, it's.
So, just pointing that out, so.
Yes.
What I talked to the police department today about, is this really a problem? They're not seeing a lot of complaints from STPs about this. There's one specific area they've got complaints. But overall, citywide, it's not a big deal for the police.
It seems to be the police department's assessment of this at all.
So, I think what we need, whatever we do, we want to make sure that we want to protect the community. But if there is a call that may not be necessarily someone cuts across the front yard, a valid call, that we invoke a suspension on something like that.
So, at this point, we will presume that C stays the way it is, back to council. Right? That's for certain.
I just have a question. Like, I realize that we're going to be able to, like, we'll vote to suspend, revoke or not renew. But is there like a number of times that they can do this? Like, if it's a nuisance property over and over again and they were reapplying 10 times? You know, I realize that we have the voting power. However, can they just continuously reapply? Or are there going to be other terms and conditions aside from fixing the problem, I guess?
If, if the council does revoke, suspend or not renew, they're, they do have to sit it out for.
For a year.
A year.
Yeah.
There's that much.
But unlimited time? Like, we could just keep voting them down?
Voting not to revoke.
Renew them, yeah.
And I, I don't know, Andrew, would you suggest? I worry about having, setting some particular standard in the ordinance because that could.
Yeah.
Limit the council's discretion, but I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, mysterious.
Well, I mean, sure, they could, they could come back an unlimited number of times. However, it would be, so say you, you not renewed, you, you, you chose not to renew their license in January of 2025. This ordinance is, is, this little addition here is written so that they can't reapply in 2026. So, the next time they could reapply would be 2027. So, while yes, they could reapply over and over again, it'd be once every two years if you decide to not renew them.
Thank you for clearing that up.
That's tough. I'm, I'm sure the council, any council at the time would want to look at the totality of the record. Somebody's had a licensed property for four years, never had a problem. Had a particular renter for a week that racked up three offenses. Versus a property where, oh my gosh, every other weekend there's something.
But frankly, the rental was sold under this, right?
Yep. They were taking this pretty seriously.
Yeah.
Just going to say.
Oh, I zoned out.
Yes, fine.
You know, the thing is with, with that, what we go through, that's like a learning experience. I mean, I, when I started renting the apartment upstairs, everything was good. The last half of my experience was. And that's why I don't rent anymore. I mean, my point is, it is a learning experience. You have to learn how to, I don't know. This is out here. You are doing this, it is a business. I mean, even in hotels, they have to kick people out too, I'm sure, sometimes.
That is, this is what some folks want here, but you're, you're, this ordinance, you're in a lot better position to shut down an annoying short-term rental than you could ever be to address a neighborhood annoyance, regular rental. Much less a homeowner. And there are sometimes problems.
You know what I'm saying?
I remember what I wanted to talk about. Um, a lot of people are really new to the short-term rental game. And I think that there's a learning curve for them. So, I think that in something like this, if we have like a two strikes, you're out, or a one strike, you're out. And it's more of a very harsh warning, you know, and say, okay, you had this, have this problem. It happened one time. If it happens again, then, you know, you're really in hot water. So, I think we should, because some of these people, they, they really mean well. And they might not really realize what they need to do, you know, or how to handle it. So, I would give them a little leeway.
Well, and that's, that's up to you as the city council when it, when it comes in. You know, when, when they come up for a revocation or suspension or whatever it is, that's, you can give them that leeway.
So, this doesn't have to be written into the.
Yeah, because it said new may.
Okay, I thought it meant you would hold it in there. Okay.
In some instances, that due process hearing could be a real teachable moment.
Yeah.
I think that's fair. If, if you're the licensee, you better show up and be prepared to respond with, with a plan to hopefully alleviate this question. Sorry, I just, I got something else.
Yeah, I was just looking over this again. This gives us the option to suspend them. Not that they have one tenant that got two tickets and then it was just a one-time thing that they would have to take away their license. But if they had multiple tenants that got a ticket, well, then they're not learning that they should. That they're people that are renting too.
And we would get the advice of the police chief and the fourth like that, I would assume. Similar to our general license. Right. I think we need that feedback mechanism. So, you gotta say, wait a minute, this, this property's had four offenses in the last six months and we never heard about it. Need to be that mechanism in place to track them. Track violations against licensed property. So, you, the council get notified at that timeline. We should probably have these, it may not be ordinance, but we should be able to assure you that from an administrative standpoint, whether it's police department zoning, code enforcement, that those aren't getting communicated. You don't want to hear from constituents, hey, this property down the block, I think they've had five violations. I'm not saying we do that, that's a, yeah, they're right, they did.
I bet someone who's had a vindictive person tried going after my license and, as you can revoke. Yeah, it turned out that their property had all kinds of calls on them. Turned into, we're now all responses, they are particularly self-aware.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I spell this out?
Yeah. Section five.
Yeah.
Yeah, so five, pretty much just a couple little tweaks, pretty much all the same. It just includes requiring the current license issued by the city to be displayed, or proof of it anyway, and the maximum capacity to be displayed. Just those little additions to what's already required.
We also require the noise ordinance be posted there?
Do, do we currently or can we?
I, do we? I don't think we do, but I know I've asked about that last time because I think it'd be helpful for the people coming to state what our noise ordinance is, because it may be different from the, the place where they live. And that, that could help possibly eliminate any conflict as to when ours kicks in. My kicking earlier or later than, than the town or city that they live in.
And have it posted like right by the front door where they have their guestbook or something. So, the police won't have to come in the house to see where it posted it. Right there for them to see. Kind of like.
Yeah. I think it'd be helpful to at least put the noise ordinance because that may help with some of the noise. Things that people say that come from the short-term rentals that they're noisy or yada, yada, yada. At least if we post the ordinance, they have no excuse as to why they're, they're breaking some ordinance.
Actually, you know, harming that and improving quality of life for the neighbors has problems.
That makes sense.
That's simple enough, I can do that. Anything else?
And again, that would be the specific provisions that relate to residential properties, right? So, hopefully it's a, I was just trying to gauge how big it could be. Hopefully it's like a single sheet. Or not, yeah, we're not papering it all. Summarize and pre-put it. Right.
I'll, I'll, I'll provide a, you know, a must-post a notice with substantially the following language, like statutes have in various places.
Thank you. And as to the capacity, Joe Metzen and I had a discussion. If the council approves that, that will probably then become part of an amended city license. So, right on the face of the license issued by the city, there'd be a statement of maximum capacity. So, that, that takes away one thing that has to be listed separately. Go on. Yeah, we don't have to put the whole noise ordinance on the, you know, on the license card. That, that one, it would be easy.
Well, the noise ordinance is specific for the guests of that.
Right, you only have a current license.
Sure. Would you also include in the lighting if we come up with lighting ordinance?
Yeah, I think.
Or is that?
Will be something that will be sent over so much.
Yeah, or that's different, yeah.
I think they're, they're going to, they're going to be turning the lights on and installing that, the lights, so.
That's fine. So, wait, is there planning to be a light or something? I don't know. We're playing with that one.
You know, this is. The more they know, the better because it might not get, you know, the owner might not really make it clear.
Right.
That here's your boundary.
And this is what the, what we hung up in the short-term rental basically, right?
Yeah. This meeting, I did add the.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Very little short-term rental practice for Steve.
Is the, Joe, do you know, is the county's certificate or whatever this size or more like a card? I've done.
It's more of a, um, happy cards.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything?
Yeah.
Any questions on, anything else on that one?
No. I don't think so.
So, shifting to six then, this is again, pretty much all already there. It, it's just the addition of requiring the portion of the register. So, it's, I think it's the fourth sentence. Portion of the register reflecting the most recent calendar quarter shall be provided to the city within the month of the end of the quarter. And required room tax shall be filed. It just requires instead of leaving it up to the city to request the, the register, putting that onto the owner to provide that register so that it can be compared to the room tax revenue. We can avoid room tax accounting issues. register so that it can be compared to the room tax revenue. We can avoid, uh, room tax accounting issues.
The aggregated amount of all of these, because again, it's a mystery as to where the money comes from for room tax. But would at least give some order of magnitude? Gee, this past quarter, it looks like, you know, based on the thirty-five or whatever STRs that we have here with the gross revenue, here's what we got from the online platforms.
And this, this is achievable for the owner of the property that can get the resources, information from Airbnb?
No, this is not requiring them to share information from the online platform. There, this is just send the city images of your guest register with the prior quarter.
Registration happens online, will that be available to this?
They still, as I understand it, tell you, Joe, or, or, they still have to keep a physical, physical register at the, at the short-term rental.
Um, I, I, I don't know that they do, uh, but they're, I mean, they're required to keep this register. So they're already required to keep this register going back two years. This is just a matter of grabbing the last three months. So however it's kept.
That's true. It's not saying each tenant needs, or each guest needs to sign in, but it's at least a, a register, however maintained, whether it will pen or spreadsheet with the requisite information.
That still doesn't answer the question, how much room tax they owe.
It doesn't literally tie this property out to the online platform.
Isn't that something we want to try to do, so we get the great collection?
I don't know. I didn't, I didn't hear consensus on that last time. Other than consensus to ask our legislators to take a look at the law and change it.
Uh, this does, I mean, it, it gives us, all, all you have to do is take, uh, so they, they have to provide the amount that was paid. Uh, so you multiply that by, what is it, point oh eight or whatever? And, uh, that gives you the room tax that they had to pay.
Right. But we don't have the corresponding figure from the marketplace of the online platforms at this point.
Right, yes.
We would know him.
It would be an accurate situation.
Yeah.
Anything else on this one? Okay.
Yeah.
Move on.
Seven, uh, just, just reorganization. It's just shifting, uh, area that was penalty in six to the penalty section as going from B to C.
Gotcha.
So in six, so in, in six thirteen six, there's, uh, it, it tells you how to do an appeal, and then it says penalties related to license and revocation. Um, and it's not, that, that section's not just limited to appeals, uh, by anything in the ordinance. So it, it makes much more sense for that to just be in the sixteen thirteen, or six thirteen seven, which is the penalties section.
Okay.
Or reorganization. And then, uh, section eight is just clarifying that, uh, short-term rentals are, uh, i- i- in this case, because we, we didn't really hear anything different, they are permitted use in R1. And as a permitted use in R1, they're allowed in all the other residential districts. This just clarifies, instead of having that kind of nebulous, um, you can have X number of boarders or, in addition to your family and, um, the person who works for you or whatever it is. Now we clearly have short-term rentals as defined by the short-term rental section.
Am I correct, though, Andrew? If, uh, if you had orders, there's kind of a clean term, but orders for a longer period of time, over thirty days duration, so they qualify as short-term rentals. Our code in single-family neighborhoods still allows three orders, I forget the other word, orders or...
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't affect that. This is, this is in addition to that term that's already there. It just, it, it provides a more specific term so that we've got a much clearer definition of short-term rentals are allowed. This is the section that applies. Um, these are the rules that apply to them. It just makes it that much clearer.
And for that specific use, it ties the capacity of the property to what we talked about earlier, two per bedroom plus four, et cetera. Whereas otherwise, if it's, I'll call it long-term tenants or long-term, not tenants, boarders, uh, then it could be three. And that, I think, is part what was addressed with an issue that we heard about at the listening session. Because as a property owner, they're concerned about a neighboring property. But my, based on my discussion last fall with that person, they put these were longer duration stays. But it sounds like the number has crept up to where it's violated. That still had an STR problem, from what I understand, but, uh, we'll do a follow-up meeting with that. By the way, Chief Minor would be here tonight. I think that he's unable to attend. I'll be here. Okay. Anything else? This was, again, the best effort at a summary of ordinance amendments based on what we talked about a month ago at the January work session. Clearly isn't as rigid as the requirements of some communities for STRs. Then again, there are other communities, including Manitowoc, Port Washington, some others we've talked about that are down the shoreline that have nothing on the books right now governing short-term rentals.
What's the, no, I'm no concern, but what is the update from response to the state? Because I want to make sure that all these people are paying their taxes. They do, they're due. We don't have problems like we did last year.
Well, legislation's getting in session, so I, I will follow up on our, on our resolution. I'll talk to a couple of draft. And there are awareness, there's an awareness out there. Whether it's a desire to go further or not. We shouldn't invite them in, because actually I don't think we might have represented a tittle at a meeting, but I, I haven't seen Senator Lamahue, now our state senator, so it will extend that invitation. Anything else as it relates to STRs for tonight?
I sent you a copy of that.
Ah, thank you.
Yeah, like, I was just gonna say.
Nice illustration. Those pictures were a thousand words on some of the lighting issues.
Um, I was gonna say, maybe, uh, when someone applies for a license, we have the information packet. You know, like with the illustration.
It just shows what cutoff lighting is and they're with light pollution and everything like that.
You know, like, this is good, this is bad.
Sort of a game, right?
Sure.
There's that deep, uh, a lot of control. Yep. Okay. We will bring further refinements to the ordinances back. I would suggest on, on next Monday's agenda, um, we'll bring what, we'll provide an update on this discussion tonight. I'll ask Adam Taylor to address the, uh, what was that, section eight? By putting it on the plan commission agenda for March ten, we may want to have a formal council referral next Monday, so that's up record. And if you want to keep the two tracking together, because the zoning code amendment has to take a detour through plan commission, that would actually give us one more work session where you could provide it with an update, and then the hearing would fall in April. I'm assuming you want to keep the two moving ahead together. Does, does that make sense? But that's out. Okay?
Okay. Uh, we discussion of possible ordinances related to the registration and inspection of residential rental properties other than short-term rentals. A description placed on such local ordinance, I think.
I, I thought it was worthwhile to at least have a brief discussion of this. I, I would submit, um, we have some bigger code enforcement issues with our long-term rental properties. And there's nothing with the short terms, but I think we should be concerned about the condition of some of our long-term rental. Unfortunately, and I just wanted to make sure everybody was up to speed on this, the state, and this goes back to twenty seventeen. If the law might have been effective twenty eighteen, has significantly restricted what cities can do. And I'm not just throwing that out there as a red herring, but I think something we need to be mindful of. You can have an ordinance that requires, uh, the registration of rental units. Manitowoc has one. They adopted it eight years ago. Keeping it up to date, I've talked to their inspections department. It's been pretty much a good base thing, relying on owners to be in touch. As a result, their list is somewhat outdated, and they're going to a new permits program, and they're going to repopulate it with data from landlords, because at least then you've got contact information, just like the short-term rental, if they have a property manager or a designated person that really is taking care of the property management service, uh, we would have that information. Um, but if you read these articles from the league, my understanding, and Adam can see to it as well, Andrew, I'm sorry. I'll just do that. Andrew Adams. Uh, we are, we are pretty much prohibited from having a local rental ordinance that calls for annual inspections or pre-occupancy inspection. It needs to be complaint-based. So, of course, that doesn't preclude trying to educate tenants as to their rights and encouraging people if they're in a substandard unit to report those things. Uh, I just, again, don't know that we want to spend a lot of time on it, but is, is that, is that pretty much the right read, Andrew, as far as where we stand with Wisconsin law? The cities have been pretty much handcuffed on this as far as more proactive inspection routine.
Yes, yes. You've, you've been restricted about a little limit. I mean, i- i- it's everything short of not allowing inspections at all.
The landlords are much more effective lobbyists than municipalities.
Any property that has a loan on it that is used for rental passing through the state home, I guess, it's hopeful.
So it's got a, including multi-family?
Yeah. I'm not sure if it's multifamily, if you live there, but if I don't live there, it's considered a rental, then it has to be built or, that's like the windows and, um, water savings stuff on. Yeah.
And that doesn't rule out things that are observable from the outside. Not necessarily very aggressive on code enforcement, but there have been cases that it's painful to try to get them through the court system when people don't comply, but on things like peeling paint, deteriorated exteriors, things that might be observed by the building inspector if they're going in to inspect, things that are covered under a permit. But we are pretty limited there as far as. The word is Wisconsin before this legislation, and there still are in other states' communities, say, no, there's an annual inspection. Or there's an inspection every two years of every rental unit, or a pre-occupancy inspection when there are vacancies. And there are fees that pay for that. That's part of being in the business. That's, you can charge to go back and reinstate when a violation is noticed, uh, is noted, um, as you're but just so folks understand, that's a very, very restrictive legislation passed and does apply.
Given the fact that you said there, is there any best practices or examples that we can follow to try to make this as safe as possible given the Wisconsin district? Is there any city that has a?
I think we could be more aggressive and then take staff on exterior observations. I mean, I, I think most of our code enforcement activity, honestly, is up to being grass mowing, junk cars and junk and debris in the yard. We probably could do a better job observing exterior violations. The only other thing, and I, and I'm not saying people can't speak up for themselves, but I'm not sure that some of the folks that are in some of our more modest, you know, not so great rentals necessarily have a lot of choices. Alternatives, uh, you know, I've had a bit of a loss there other than education and promotion.
One thing I would point out is that there, you know, the, the limitations on landlords, uh, and inspecting landlords and, and rental properties, i- i- it doesn't change the fact that, for example, the city can go after nuisance properties and, and those kinds of things.
Well, he doesn't know what happens to our nuisance property. They never go away.
Or they come back.
The same ones keep coming back.
I know we, you know, Manitowoc has, under their nuisance ordinance, done after some properties and ultimately demolished. I don't know what the count is. But we also know from experience with, I think, talking about the same one, with the city ultimately got a court order to go in with front-end loader and dump truck. Uh, that, that took a lot of time.
I know someone who has been written up or gotten fines for peeling paint on the windows. I've had to listen to it, so I don't have to do it.
When we were renting out apartments, um, the, the bike department comes in annually to inspect your, um...
Is that a question? Little door.
Well, that, and... What did you say? It's big, it's red, you pointed it. I'm sorry. I'm not firing tonight. But anyway, they come in annually and they take a look at it. They look at the, the dates, you know, the last one. They, they make sure that you're on top of it. Um, I'm thinking that if they're coming through at that time, maybe if we broadened our expectations as to what they could maybe look at at that time and report back. They're, they're another set of eyes.
Yeah.
So.
To be honest with you, I, I'm ignorant on that as to when fire extinguishers are required. And they're not a requirement if you're running out of single-family home.
No, I can't remember how, there's, they have to be in the, in the hallways, and they have to be placed X number of feet apart. And there's, you just have to make sure that they're, um, available to anyone who really needs one. They're not in the apartment.
They're in the common areas or hallways.
Right, right. And down in the basement and...
Need to, active, will we ask Andrew maybe to give us some suggestions for us to review? And see if we can reinforce them against the problem?
That best practice is?
Yeah, best practices.
We can try to bring that back. I mean, I think that was one of the things we heard council members heard that were for the session last week, Eric. Term, yeah. Blighted property, nuisance property, but folks feel aren't being attended to as quickly as they'd like.
Do we have any, you can keep hedge funds from coming in and buying up properties? Because that's what the public is probably more so against than anything, because they've bought up daycares and everything else and pushed the prices up. And everybody wants to get the same letters I give for, oh, well, we're a family-owned thing, we want to buy your house. Well, that's a crime.
The county of Winnebago just made a resolution asking the state, I, I forgot how, what they were asking. They want to try to control the corporate, corporations that buy single-family homes. Um, I don't know if that'll go anywhere, because the Realtors Association is very powerful. But other people are finding some of that a problem almost. That's the point. That's why I'm probably not.
Or if they buy a little LLC that has three or four properties, and then I will, and then they want the rights to use the name for that LLC. No, we're still this, but actually in actuality, they're something else.
Help me out, Andrew. I've got to believe at the local level, we'd be precluded with as to restricting the form of ownership of property. That sounds like a, a state issue, if not a federal issue. Corporations are people too. I got that one straight from Citizen United.
Yeah, that's, uh, Supreme Court, yep. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be hard, uh, in a lot of ways. Uh, so there are, um, if I'm remembering correctly, potential restrictions. I'd have to double-check, uh, or... If I'm remembering correctly, potential restrictions, I'd have to double-check, or potential restrictions available that the city could implement. But I'd have to double-check exactly where the, where the legislature steps in and it would likely be something more like. Potentially, maybe fees. I'm just trying to think of, yeah, the problem is how restrictive the state is with landlord, the landlord side of it. But if you, if we can separate it from that, just to the number of properties owned, that kind of a thing. We could potentially work on limiting big entities coming in and buying a lot of properties.
Yeah, is that, I think that's something you're hearing about nationwide, yeah.
You know, it's a big trend.
I don't know where that stands in Wisconsin, but we can, we can ask our city attorney to look at that further.
That's something I'd have to look into further as far as, you know, finding specific ways that we could limit that. We don't want to follow the landlord question just because, again, corporations are treated as people. And so, to limit them is akin to limiting a person. And, yeah, so we'll, we'll see what we can come up with.
Okay, just, who's the thought there? Or is that it, right, and be that as far as I'm concerned?
Okay. On the C discussion of position assessment form for city manager search and selection.
I mean, this, this one is primarily the province of the city manager recruitment and selection committee, which again is Scott and Bonnie and Adam and Mark's. But one of the things that public administration associates indicated they would be providing and did get to my office last week. Is an assessment form as they termed it, the version that was in with you, in your packets is as we received it from PAA. And that's fine for distributing to council and city department heads. And I will do that via email, so you've got the return address, which we've white it out on the form that's in the agenda. But the committee had also said that it wants to make this survey form available to the community. One of the challenges there is how do we make it readily available online so you can fill it out and return it? And based on a quick look at it today, talking briefly with IT and with, actually with Mike Mathis, our partner, the rec director, because they're just launching a customer service survey using Survey Monkey. It appears, at least for folks that are online, the easiest, quickest way would be to get this out, to get out on social media and the city's website, that there, there's a survey available through Survey Monkey. This is the same survey with the exception, and I'm not, I don't do Survey Monkey or Google Forms, so I'm relying on people that do. As I understand it, these, question number one, which lists like twenty-some criteria and you're supposed to rank them. Rank your top five, and on the one that was provided by PAA, it's identify number one, two, three, four, and five. Rank ordering them on Survey Monkey and Google Forms, I'm told, with that many different items to choose from isn't feasible. My suggestion would just be to ask the public, identify the top five, check off the top five, don't do one, two, three, four, five. If there's a good number of responses, they, they would still tabulate and identify what the top criteria are, whether it's for skills and experience or experience, I guess, which is question number one. Or whether it's the five most important personality attributes under question number two.
I think just, sorry, not cutting you off, but in, in one, I would think just even us. Highlight the top five, I don't think we need to know what's your number one most important, I would say five, five out of twenty of them, I think the top five, I think they're all number one important. I don't think it really matters.
I'd be all for that, that is the exact same survey.
I mean, you could have a lot of different number ones here, but all in the same category, does it really matter?
I agree with Adam, and like earlier, I think it's right to just get five key points and put that out publicly.
In terms of PAA getting their material together and their ad out, we're going to need to get the results of this, we should be pretty painless from the analytics that I received. Get Survey Monkey, we're going to need to get it, get that pulled together by February, sorry, March seven, so that would, if we get it out tomorrow, then we have the balance of this week and all of the tax.
Do you want us to fill out on this form, or do you want us to do?
We'll go ahead and send this to you with the return information, so as council and department head, you guys can send it directly back to PAA. Yeah, I did alter it for that purpose, because I don't think we want all the publics to date PAA, but I'll send those out to you tonight.
I want to make sure I'm understanding you, there's a lot of things to choose from, you said, and which are, there are, but these, these different survey, they can't handle that many?
Because I understand that the public is handling rank order one through five out of twenty. So. Yeah.
It's not the number of.
This many boxes are fine, as long as you just put, you know, click on five of them.
Okay.
So. Yeah.
You can buy special software, buy special survey software for that, but for one-time thing, right?
Yeah.
Can the word five be bold in bold, so people notice it?
I'm sorry.
Can the word five be in bold, so people are more likely to notice it, hopefully?
And I think we can mention, I don't see a lot of people messing around with paper forms, but if somebody wants to request by stopping at customer service or calling our office, somebody then on staff is going to have to input those. I honestly don't think.
I want to think so, but we actually should be out there. There's some elderly people, one of them being my grandfather, who does not live in two rivers, but lives in the country, but with this, does not do computers.
Yeah. We'll, we'll do a press release on it, I guarantee it gets into the HTR within ten days. That's somewhat sarcastic, not really though, but that can point out, pick them up at customer service or by comment. That would be on.
Put a copy of this, be posted on the windows at the city hall, kind of like everything else is.
We could do that as well.
Because I'm surprised that most of the public doesn't know that all that stuff is posted on the windows at city hall. Social media, did you know? Yeah, users posted it all.
It's also at the rec and it's also right here at the library.
Yeah, those are by Sashin, I suppose. We can post it, you can't, I guess we can't do any harm, other than take up one more spot on the bulletin board. So that was really for discussion primarily, so we will proceed, we will send you via direct email, the survey form in the same format, where it's just pick the top five, not rank order the top five. We have the email address to send them right back to the administrative assistant at PAA. And then we'll get this launched in social media with a link to Survey Monkey. Thanks to both Mike and Rick for helping with that.
So the results going great to PAA?
The results would go, somebody here has got it. Probably both. As far as the community feedback, I would think we'd want to post a summary of that. Sometimes the open-ended questions have, make it for the most interesting reading.
Yes, they definitely do.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay, on to D, considering, considering matters related to city funding facade and sign grants.
Yeah, we do have some money in this year's budget, we have a number of projects we're carrying over, as you know, that were approved in 2024 and need to be wrapped up in 2025. I thought it would be helpful to sort of go over a summary of what the city has helped fund in recent years and what we have in process. And maybe get some general guidance from the council on this, if you need, if you could go on to the next agenda. I, I would point out, the list here, as, as noted, is for facade sign and small business grants funded by the city. And sometimes it's all city, sometimes it's city partnering with Main Street. There have been facade grants to go back prior to 2022, those, I think I'm correct, were all Main Street funded. Think about, I know there were facade grants to help traders who talked about their building. Curtises with repairs and restaining the building. The Wicker Realty Building with a beautiful job taking off the vinyl siding and, you know, uncovering the brick. I think each of those, and I'm probably missing some, were funded entirely through Main Street's grant program of up to $10,000 per facade. We've been partnering with Main Street if the properties are downtown, and to the extent they have money in recent years. And likewise, the council's made money available through some of our active districts and Fund 290, which is the former, well, still is the economic development fund, but that's what we're also able to use for other purposes. So what's been completed that's involved city funding for facades in 22, 23, and 24, those are the first five projects listed there. And just worth noting, the High Lift, Why Not LLC, which is for Cool City Brewing. Renee Specialties out of Memorial Drive, that was restaining the exterior of the building. Lake Shore Rock and Gem was for their sign, pretty modest assistance there, split by the city and Main Street. And then Meridian Wellness at the former Hill Union State Bank over on Monken Avenue. So those, we partnered with Main Street on Why Not LLC with the Cool City Brewing Building, partnered on Lake Shore Rock and Gem. The others were outside of the bid district, the business improvement district that funds Main Street. So, whoops, that's an error there, total grant should be $10,000 for the High Lift.
That's not bad.
Sorry.
Better than old number.
Yeah. Renee Specialties was entirely out of Fund 290, the active fund, and then Meridian was out of TID number eight last year because it's within that half mile radius. What I didn't put on here, and it would be a useful column, maybe at a future council meeting, is how much money did those grants leverage in additional investment by the business? What was approved in 2024, but is dispersment of funds is pending because the projects were given extensions on completion. Just as a reminder, the Hook Lanes and Games was an original grant for $10,005 from the city and Main Street by council action. Council, city participation extended to $25,000, total $30,000 grant, that's TID 13. And that one now has a deadline of completion by May 31st, paperwork all in by June 30th. RJSK Properties is the Kuba Building multi-tenant residential, or excuse me, commercial building with residential up. That one was approved for renovation this past summer. Again, they ran into some real challenges with getting a contractor and the schedule from a contractor. That likewise is extended to May 31st with paperwork in by June 30th. But there's twenty, there's $5,000 being reserved for that out of TID 13, and Main Street is likewise reserved $5,000 for that. Pop Start Restaurant and The Wave TR LLC were both approved by council in July or August of last year. Pop Start, we termed a small business grant because it's going into their overall project, it's not specific to their facade. That one's all coming out of TID eight, it's not in the bid district, so it's all city. They have a building permit, they are working actively on the building and are awaiting delivery of their P5, so it's, they still, you know. The Wave TR LLC, Joe Baiton is the principal there, this is the old, what used to be the Chronic Body Shop over on Jackson Street, council did approve that as a facade grant. Outside the bid, TID eight, you might remember, number eight and number nine here came before the council, as we were right up against the deadline for expenditures out of TID eight. So those, while those were accounted for in last year's budget, they both ended up needing carryovers that hopefully will be spending that money this year, getting it out the door. I want to bring to the council next Monday, Violet Inn, Violet Inn is benefiting from a Pago Tiff grant of $130,000, assuming they generate cash to support that. They are putting $1.6 million into the project, and there was discussion when they first came to the table, to the city, about a facade grant. Main Street, I got the card a little ahead of the horse on this one because the Main Street Design Committee met last week for their regular meeting. They did approve earmarking $5,000 out of this year's Main Street budget. That, that would be the other ones they've got money reserved for, is all the money they, they have for this year, but they, their design committee did vote to reserve the $5,000 they have still available for this project. And gave their blessing to design, but would like to come to council next week for approval for fifteen, that would be granted as a reimbursement after the project is done. What is that, leave us, I tried to summarize things at the bottom with 2025 budgeted resources for facade and sign grants. There's $90,000 total in this year's budget, now that's, that's counting, I should say, in TID eight. He shows $20,000 as an estimated spend last year, but it did happen, so we're carrying that over. There's $20,000 there and that is tied up with a commitment we've made to Pop Start and The Wave. That's the yellow above. And then TID number 13 had $60,000 in the budget this year. And that is a, there's some of that committed up above the hook, $25,000. Kuba Building, $5,000. If council approves the Violet Inn, that would get us up to $45,000, that would still be $20,000 available for projects this year. And then finally, Fund 290, which is the de-federalized CDG revolving loan fund. There's $10,000 budgeted this year and none of that is spoken for yet. So I think we should also get some fresh publicity out on this, because there is $25,000 there, could help people with their facade. And frankly, if, if all of the projects that have money encumbered get done timely this year, and expect they will, then I think that will be pretty impactful as far as the downtown. I know people have different thoughts as to people being given extensions, but it's not easy these days for small businesses, contractors lined up.
These projects have done a lot of good, I really like these because I think we've done a lot, a lot of good with them in our downtown and other businesses that are in the case of the downtown that have really been fixed up nice, making our buildings look pretty sharp on some buildings that weren't looking very sharp for a while. And encouraging business owners to do this and helping to the city has really enriched the world.
And it's a creative, I agree with Adam, it's creative support, do this without directly relating to a property package too. We all have the funds that we have, that can help these developments grow and improve our city.
And this kind of coincided with the city ending direct cash support to Main Street, but we talked about, are there some deliverables that are directly benefiting businesses? In, in the downtown, but also beyond, and I know, Adam, I came across your email the other day from three, four years ago now, where it said, hey, what can we do here? And it was sort of a follow-on to the grants that came during COVID. Little different concept. So, I, I'm not looking for specific action, but I guess maybe consensus, it would be fair to bring the Violet Inn application to the next meeting. Maybe use that as a chance to publicize that there is still some money available for businesses. We have had some businesses that have approached us after installing signage, I'm a little hesitant on that, it's already in place. I don't know if we need to sign the review. But those, those are very well. Be a great thing for our new economic development director to know we still don't have a candidate here. So, sorry, got off track there, any questions, this shows a grand total of ten projects, this is the last. Three years and hopefully a couple more could be happened. Unrelated to that, but I'll riff just briefly, the next plan commission agenda, you will see, like in our character plan, the review for a new building for Dark Side Strength. The fitness conditioning business that's on the east side in Grove Garage. The owner of Grove Garage is building a new building, about 2,800 square feet, or that. Or that, or dark side strength, which is on his residence now. And you'll also see site and architectural plans for Russian Logistics, where they have the industrial part. Sorry, I deviated a little from the agenda there, but.
Still on communication from the apartment complex? I see the big sign out there.
I can fill you in, probably in closed session at the next meeting. Communication as recently as today. That's all I had on that one, Mr. President.
Okay. Then item E, update on the February 19th, 2025 city council community listening session. All important discussion will be on March 3rd, 2025 regular city council meeting. So first of all, I would like to thank our host that helped us here that night, Terry and Chris, amazing. They helped us with chairs. We didn't expect all sixty people were there. So as we, as I was shouting at the beginning, Terry walked up with a microphone speaker and helped us celebrate away. So that was, that was nice for her. But no, it went really well. I emailed all you that night, just to let you know, if you wondered. I think it went really, went really well. I know Mark and Shannon, they also thought it was, went well. Greg was there that evening, so was Joe, and Greg kept his mouth shut most of the time, as he promised. I know it's hard for him. A couple times I looked over and he was ready to say something. But we, we had him answer a couple of questions for us, but no, we're really, really well. There was some bickering amongst citizens themselves. Someone would say something and someone wouldn't agree with that, so there was some bickering and back and forth. We tried to stop that as close as we could and kind of move on from that. We wanted, as I said, it's for them to talk to us and ask us questions, whatever's on their mind, concerns, stuff like that. Mark had two pages of notes, and I had like three or four pages of notes. So we'll get, I'll get that typed up and ensure that, like I said, the next, next meeting. But there's a lot of positives. They're very appreciative that we did it. Like I said, sixty people showed up. We put extra chairs out for everyone, but it was a, yeah, it was, it was amazing for the first time. We went right up to eight o'clock. We started at six, went right up to eight. We probably could run out for another hour, but it was good that we were close to eight. Otherwise, we would, you know, don't know what we would went into after that, another hour. But yeah, it went, like I said, went really well. If anyone has questions or? Shannon, Mark, do you have any comments about it?
I was really happy that we did it. I think it gave citizens a different venue to approach us and talk to us. And I think a lot of them just wanted to be heard. So I think it gave them a good feeling that we were there, we listened to everything. And sometimes that's all they just really wanted, was just to get it out there. So I'm really glad we did that, and I think the residents are too.
Yeah.
I think it was good. I agree that it's a good format for them to communicate. The stress that we want you to communicate normally, like you have in the past, and continue. And Scott did a good job of claiming that listening says it means listen. Just because you said something doesn't mean you're going to get it. But we want to listen to that and see what we can do to make it better for them. Good job.
Yeah, yeah. And we'll steal the beginning of it, that kind of went through some of the stuff that our attorneys gave us. What the purposes of, we're not, we can't promise anything. We're not going to, you know, say yes to everything. Then I added my own little word from our council conduct policy about treating everyone with respect and kindness and stuff like that too. Just so to try to emphasis, to become, wait your turn, that type of stuff. And for the most part, it worked. Like I said, it went off the rails a little bit here and there. I would just consider those people very passionate for the city. We'll leave it at that. So the next one will be in May, and which is at some point, pick a date and time, and where the next three people will be.
So just an observation, the library worked very well, and Jeff, your staff was super accommodating. It, there were times that because the library's open and there were other patrons, where folks coming and going from a class, we're talking in normal tones, but that felt disruptive. I think if we had a stronger sound system for the listening session meeting, that would have, could have become disruptive to the rest of the library. So I, I'm a little torn, not, I start with yours, but on venues. You know, the more formal you make it, it gets away from that comfort level that we have down there. I, I don't know how you do that. The recording thing too, well, a lot of times people are put off or intimidated by, you know, being livestreamed or something. And it also, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you want to really.
Yeah, no, I think if, like Shannon said, if it was a good setting, it was, don't have to worry about there being recorded or anything.
Right.
If someone were to put their thoughts in and we'll open, put it in the Dropbox, like where you drop off utility and stuff, will that get to the right spot?
It's the indication for city council.
Is it like, I thought of putting a Dropbox in my honor, just that, you know, some people are more than welcome. They come in and they'll express their opinion. But just that, that way a person has a place to even go past whenever, drop it in and.
Yeah.
Comment box or something. If people know they could do that.
Yeah. Maybe they want to address an envelope just to the city council or to our office. They can put it in the Dropbox, City Hall. Sometimes people do drop their communications off at customer service. I just didn't know, for example, Jeff, what, what's the capacity of this room?
This room is, I want to say eighty or ninety. I would recommend not having that fireplace replaced again.
Yeah.
And if this room would be available, there would be this room. Some systems would have a much better this room. Disruptions would be much harder.
Yeah.
You have to remember, there was a boos and shakers in this room, which were babies. Didn't mix with the crowd that was down at the other end of the library. And then, yeah, we have a Spanish language class that teaches Spanish that was disrupted. I felt that maybe, that what I heard, a little disrespect. And they're, they've been here a long time.
Yeah.
Had a quality in their sessions. So by the fireplace, oh, it's nice and beautiful. You saw I set it up for maybe twenty people.
Yeah.
I had no idea that it was stupid. So, if, you know, there are things being said and gestures being made, this health is available and viable. I'll leave it at that. If the community rooms available, I would be happy to post it in this room.
Sure.
If it had been a quiet discussion among ten, fifteen people sitting in easy chairs at the fireplace, it would have been totally different, but it was a big town hall meeting.
I'm happy with the success of it.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah. No, it's just unfortunate that.
But my staff were texting behaviorists.
By the way, Jeff and I did script that, but this, this room is beautiful. The acoustics in here are great, and might be a, might be an option.
Absolutely. If we're in the house or something, so. Any questions?
So, Mr. President, you'll have, it'll be an agenda item for at least, at least identifying the issues that were raised and how they're being parsed out, whether among the council or to staff for follow-up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Great. Okay.
Exec, oh, we talked about the elevator executive session. I would ask to go in. I don't, honest to God, I don't think it'll take more than 10 minutes to get out of here.
Okay. City council reserves right to enter a closed session for Wisconsin Statutes 19.81E, deliberating and negotiating the purchase of public properties, investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Tonight, discuss possible property purchase. Thank you. Welcome for a second. Thank you, Shannon. Any council discussion? Seeing none, so be your own call vote. Al.
Dan Bosky.
Hi.
Shannon Kirby.
Hi.
Bonnie Juni Wellness.
Hi.
Bob Brand.
Hi.
Carol LeClaire.
Hi.
Stathis Stachemus.
Hi.
And Beech.
Hi.